All right, board members, we're back in business again. We're going on to Section 9.8, which is the approval to request the additional project funds for the new Odell Grade 3-5 Elementary School. Ms. Kelly Klutz and Mr. Meehan will be presenting.
I was beginning to wonder. Good afternoon. Last board meeting at the work session, we presented a request to request additional funds to the county commissioners for, to settle up the project for the Odell School Grades 3 through 5. When we left here, I felt a good bit of concern from the board. There were a lot of questions and concern. And so, we wanted to take this opportunity, if you will allow us, just to use Dr. Phillips' words, how did we get here? And maybe go back through and follow the breadcrumbs to how we got here and where we are now. And just, if you'll give us just a few minutes, Dan and I just want to go back over the history just a little bit, because we want you to feel more comfortable about where we are and the decision that we need to make tonight, and make sure that you're feeling good about that decision. So, I think we lost our way a little bit, and I want to go back to, I went back to my records when we were calculating some estimates for this school. And at the time, we didn't know what this school was going to be, but we knew it was an elementary school at the time. I went back to my records in January of 2014, and we had some internal estimates. And at the time, those internal estimates were approximately 21,500, 21 million, thank you, to get it for 21,000, 21,500,000 dollars is what the staff was estimating that this school would cost us. And I just give you that as a reference point. We were pulling data, historical data from A.T. Allen and Patriots at that time, and Mr. Farr had asked me for that data last week, and I've since provided that to you by email. And I think I have that here for you today if you need to, if you need that again. In addition, besides that, those figures, we also used current square foot pricing of construction costs to get that number. So, we were, our internal estimates were 21 and 1/2 million dollars at that point.
And so then, in April of 2014, additional funding was acquired, 16 million dollars, from the Board of Commissioners. So, now the total funding is up to 17,500,000 dollars, 1.5 million being for the land acquisition back in January of 2013. So, the funding again is up to 17,500,000 dollars. Administration and you, the Board of Education, informed the Board of Commissioners that 17.5 million would not be enough to complete the project. At that time, the Commissioners instructed the Board of Education to return with additional requests for funds when bids were in hand.
Okay. So, we're in October at this point, and we're in mediation with our county commissioners. And we requested an additional 2 million dollars. At that point, the Commissioners awarded us 2 million dollars. We, at that point, had that conversation and said, "We know that that is not enough money." So, we've established approximately three times now that we know that the money that's been allocated and funded is not enough. So, again, here in mediation, we've said, "Yes, we need, we have 17 and 1/2 million dollars allocated. We want, we need this 2 million dollars, but be aware that we're not, this is not going to do it." So, that's going to be 19 and 1/2 million, but we know that we're still going to be short, and we're going to be coming to you for another request. The board was aware of that, the Commissioners were aware of that at that time.
So, then we move on to November of this year, and the board reviewed value engineering as a good faith effort. I was sure in the Commissioners that we're going to do all we can to cut down on the price of this project. And the reductions left 239,634 dollars left in the contracts. We actually cut it down, Kelly, was it about 700,000?
That was the reduction we did, is 239,000 dollars.
Right, originally, we were quite a bit higher than that, and, you know, due diligence, that's how we got it down to that number. The board awarded the contract to BEAM for 15,527,000 dollars at that time in November as well. And once again, the board was aware that the project was short over a million dollars. So, the board and the Commissioners know this is the fourth time we made them aware that we're still going to be short.
And I would add that we had really competitive bids. We had eight bidders that bid on this, on this project. It's not like we only had two or three bidders, we had eight. The bids were from 15.5 million dollars to 16.9 million dollars. And so, you awarded your bid at, obviously, the lowest bid at 15.5. Okay. So, now, here we are. We know, we presented a request to you to make a request to the Commissioners for 1.1 million dollars, and I feel that you're uncomfortable with that request based on some of the conversation that we had last week. So, we can go back and we can, so, these are the options that I see that you have, and we can talk about any other options that you want. But at this point, we can make that request to the Board of Commissioners, and that's 1.1 million dollars. Or, we can go back and we can talk about the things that we've talked about before. We can talk about the value engineering that we talked about before that we didn't take. So, it was not the recommendation of the Construction Subcommittee, it was not the recommendation of the Administration, and we even talked briefly about some things here in this boardroom that we did not think were good ideas last, the last time it was presented to this board. Things like removing six classrooms from this school. Now, those are things that will reduce the price of this construction contract, and if you don't want to go to the Board of Commissioners and ask for 1.1 million dollars, those are things that we can do. But those are things that are going to have a future consequence to our system. We're going to be going back to the Commissioners in a year and saying, "We need to add in addition," like we did with Boger and Farr, and we know those aren't expensive either. So, and we need to look, and we need to know what the board's pleasure is. We can do things like removing classrooms, we can remove video surveillance cameras. Those are things that we didn't feel were feasible or reasonable to bring to you. But if those are things that you want to do, we can take everything out that was even an option of value engineering, and we still can't get the 1.1 million dollars that we need. We would still have to make a request to the Board of Commissioners. So, we need to know, you know, at this point, we also, we're also aware that we need to talk about geothermal and LED, but I want to keep that aside, Carolyn, if you will allow me. We'll talk about that in just a minute, because I know you want to talk about that. But right now, we have 1.1 million dollars that we need to make a decision. Do you want to ask the Commissioners for it? Or do you want to go back to the drawing board and issue change orders and try to do something with this school? But I think that's where we are. We're beyond decision-making. We've already issued the contract. You awarded the contract to BEAM for 15.5 million dollars, and they're on go. So, if you want to value engineer at this point, you're going to be issuing change orders, and we need to, we need that decision now.
And so, just to summarize where we are with the funds needed, total project with this request with the additional 1.1 million. We had the land fund in January 2013 for 1.5 million, initial funding, additional funding in April 2014 for 16 million. The mediation funding was an additional 2 million, and we were asking you whether or not you would like to request that 1.1 million back to the Board of Commissioners. And so, our total would be 20,644,000 dollars and some change. And just as a reminder, our original estimates, when this first went out in January 2014, were conservative at the time, and that still was 21 and 1/2 million dollars. So, we're still quite a bit under that in original estimate, even as time goes by this year.
We are?
All right. Well, board members, I'll start with Mr. Farr to see if there are any comments from that end, and we'll move right on down.
And I was afraid you was going to start with me on this one. You know, when you just said that both boards were aware that you were probably going to come back to them requesting the 1.1 million, that makes me feel a little better. Now, you know, just coming back on the board and looking at this, and, you know, I'm thinking to myself, okay, in my personal life, if I was going to build a house and someone told me that, you know, "I'm only going to give you 200,000 dollars, so why would I even be looking at a 250,000 dollar house?" So, we kind of knew we were going to be short from the get-go. So, we're just at the mercy of the Commissioners, correct?
That's right.
So, it really doesn't matter what we recommend, we're still at the mercy of those folks. But I think with the working relationship we've probably got now, we're in a better situation than we were before. Do we want to come back and ask for it? I think no one on this board wants to do that. But unless we want to, just like you said, reduce some things, then, you know, I think we have no choice. Now, if they come back to us and say, "Hey, we're going to stick to what we originally said," then we'll make those changes then.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. Mr. Harrison?
At the risk of asking a very unfair question, how much is this school going to cost? When we open the doors of this school, what's the price tag of this school going to be, as best as your best crystal ball can tell us at this moment?
So, it depends. So, right now...
A very accountant response.
So, if you approve this request for 1.1 million dollars, we will be at 20,644,374. That's assuming we spend every dime of the contingency and every allowance that's in, and we probably will, because there's, it's the allowance and the contingencies are...
Right now, we're expecting a 20,600,000 dollar school.
So, we also need to address the geothermal separately, and if we do that, then that'll be more. Okay? So, but right now, we're looking at that number, 20,000.
So, we're on track, a year and a half from now, when we open the school doors, to approximately say this is that amount, those amounts, with no other additions to those figures.
So, the thing that's not included in this is additional funds for a roundabout.
Well, and to me, that's...
That's outside the school.
I know it has to be done, but it's not the cost of the school property site itself, per se.
Right, but being upfront and all in.
Can't open up without, and I understand that's relevant, I know that, but in terms of the school itself, okay, I'm just not going to hold you to that exact figure, I don't mean to imply that, I just want to get that figure in my mind. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter?
Now, when did we bring the architect onboard? Do we know?
When did we bring the architect onboard?
February timeframe.
Okay, so that was after the 1 point, or the 21.5 million estimate?
Yes. Yeah, those were just internal, those were me and Dave and Blake, and we were just...
Our ask the county commissioners, though, was 20, it was 20, and we got 19 and 1/2, or we reduced that to 19 and 1/2 at some point?
We started with 1 and 1/2, then we got 16, so then we were at 17 and 1/2, and then...
Yeah, my, yeah, my misunderstanding, my comments from last week was, you know, just getting my mind around the decision that we made to, first off, instead of rush the schedule to have it completed, I guess in August, we were saving, you know, I don't know, half a million dollars. And then by changing the school from, you know, an estimated 21 million or whatever we're saying, to reduce that, we're supposed to reduce that by a certain amount by making it a 3-5 school. And then when these bids come back, I don't, that part I don't understand. But the issue is, I see that we have eight bids, that's important. I mean, that is what the market is to build the building, and we need the building, the growth, their growth is coming, we have to get this school up, so that's where I stand, but that's where my confusion was.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Phillips?
Okay, thank you. Okay, let me, help me understand the chart that's up there on the big screen.
Yes.
Particularly the column that says revised budget, is, does that reflect our current best estimate of what we're going to spend, or what is that?
No, that is our, the current funding that we have. So, that's what the county has allocated, 19 and 1/2 million, and those are the areas in which we have that funding allocated into.
Okay. But then, what then is our current best estimate? For instance, for site development, what are we going to spend?
So, the areas, the top areas that are in the construction subtotal, all of those areas, so when we started budgeting, we budgeted those lines separately. But what happens is, we put the site work and a lot of the demolition and all of those, a lot of those areas into the one big construction contract, into that one line item. And so, that's why you're seeing that one construction line item is 4.2 million dollars over budget, and all the other line items in those areas, they have additional dollars remaining.
Okay, so, if I look at the remaining budget, the subtotal for construction is a negative 837, and that's basically the amount that we're asking the Commissioners for, plus 300,000 for contingency?
Right, so you take that, you're exactly right, you take that 837,372 that's in the subtotal, because that's where we are, once we issue the contract to the construction. And then you go to the bottom, you see the highlighted portion down there on the bottom, so that's the 837,000 dollars that we need to finish out the construction, to be whole. And then we need 307,000 dollars to have a minimal contingency. That's going to put us at 3% contingency. And so, that's our request, that's the 1.1 million dollars. And remember, we talked about those couple, there's a couple little things that we're not going to ask the county commissioners for. We're not going to ask them for the playground thing that we did, and we're not going to ask them to reimburse us for the 95,000 dollars that we have already taken out of. So, there's a couple of things that could add to this total that we just said, "We're just going to take care of that." The board's agreed to do that.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. You know, my children went to Cox Mill Elementary and Harris Road Middle School, and both those schools were built at a time when there was rising construction costs, and because of that, there were budget constraints that they ran into, and they ended up not getting the initial allotment of technology that most of our other elementary schools got. And I know that it's only recently that we've been able to catch up and have wireless access and everything else in those schools, and I would hate to see us put yet another school out on the west side of the county and shortchange it. So, I'm, I agree that, you know, we need to ask the Commissioners for a full amount so that we can have an elementary school that's comparable to the other ones that have been built.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Ms. Carpenter?
Not now, not now.
We'll get to it, okay? I promise, we won't leave without talking about it.
All right, not now. Can I talk about the engineering in the road?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, the 107,000 dollar engineering, what was that for? 107, 107,000?
107,000.
No, it was 107,000.
That's the budget, no.
That was on that same budget amendment. 107,000 for engine, it says engineering.
Do you know?
It was on that same one that says for overages.
Budget amendments, grade line, 107,000.
107,000.
I can tell you specifically what the scope of work for the engineering included. It was due diligence for site studies, it was environmental site assessments, it was geotechnical subsurface explorations, soil borings, and it also includes construction materials testing and special inspections.
Okay, that was, okay. The other thing, the 4, for the road construction, is that just for that 400, I know you said it wasn't for the circle, excuse me, for road construction, is that just for that cut-through road?
Yeah, the 450,000 dollars was a budgeted amount. That would be including off-site road improvements. That was the intent for that budget item.
But that was not including the...
So, in the bid, we do have road improvements in the bid on Odell School Road. What's not included in the bid is the roundabout or the Highway 73 improvements.
Okay, but that doesn't, that 450,000 does not include that then? Right, correct.
It helps cover the road improvements on Odell School Road, and again, the improvements on Highway 73, we just happen to have that, that's not nailed down as far as what that scope is, and the funding on that is not included.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right. And then, we'll come back to the other bid.
All right, yes, ma'am, we will, we will.
Okay, I'm going to hold you to that, because I got my paperwork here.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, we'll come back to it, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Powell?
I think, this is maybe a finance question, if we were to fund, put a certain amount, say 2 million dollars, from our fund balance in to this project, and then we end up with 2 million dollars that we didn't need, that we would typically return to the county, because I know that we've returned lots of money, 6 million dollars over the last four projects, to the county, is that allowed? Could we possibly do that legally?
Legally, you can. I will stand here before you every day of my life and tell you that I do not recommend it. If you, as a board, decide to do it, you're going to be doing it against every hair on my head. I will tell you that fund balance is generated from operating. It is for the purpose of educating our students, it is not capital in nature. It is something that I obviously am clearly adamant about. If you take our fund balance and you use it for capital, then you're taking, you're taking money out of our, out of our students, out of our teachers' paychecks, you're taking money out of our, the supplies out of the classroom, you're taking, those are just, those are operating expenses, they are not intended for capital. And it's setting a precedent that I think you'll never recover from, and I think we will sacrifice our children's education for many decades if we start down that path. It's not, it's not the structure of our funding stream, and we should, we shouldn't, I never recommend it, I'm not, you're a board, you can decide to do that, but I will never, never encourage or agree that that's a good thing for you to do.
Okay, I was just asking a question. You know, because in this, there's lots of, there's lots of soft costs, I guess, like the startup money and equipment and furniture, which, you know, anyway, at the very least, there's a point there about the contingency fund that could be presented to the Commissioners to at least kind of give them a historical perspective of how much they have been getting backed from projects. That was more my point, other than, and just to clarify, could we do it if we needed to? That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. I don't really have any questions, I do have some comments. Last week, I did have a conversation with Board Chair Morris and County Manager Mike Downs and Dr. Shepherd, and we talked about this project, and they're aware of the amount of money that we're going to have to ask for. I know that they're trying to look at where they are in their capital forecasts, and so they're going to be struggling with how they're going to allocate their capital dollars. So, I won't comment on where they're going or how they're going to do their business. In that conversation, Mr. Downs was aware, when we did the geothermal design option, that that was out there, and what they asked is, is if we could provide that as an option to them, not as a request for them, but an option to them, that and the LED lighting, because they would like to know all of the options that we have available to us, whether they, they may or may not honor them, but they just want to know what we're doing and what options we have to possibly save the public money in the future. I did tell them that Mr. Burnett is in the process of investigating some private funding and looking into some options along that route that may help that process. But their comment to me was, "At least let us, let us know everything about the project, including even those two options that are out there, because we're very interested in doing anything we could if we can find the money to do sustainable things." So, for our public. So, I mirrored that to the board, and I told them that I would pass that along to our, to our board and let them know that they are interested in that, they are aware of this particular cost. In the future, we did express that we would not like to be under the pressure we were under last year to try to nail down the actual cost of a school with absolutely no design, which is what our board was under last year, and we kind of put out a price that was a bare-bones price for the, for the school, because it ended up going from 21 and 1/2 to 19 and 1/2, so we cut 2 million off of the, off of the price, and said that we could probably do it for 19 and 1/2 million dollars, and that was voiced. But, you know, that was based on a lot of pricing from 2009, the Patriots pricing, and there was no design at all at that point to base any of the information on. So, I'll yield on that, and did you want to go through any other things, Ms. Klutz?
I do want to talk, talk about the geothermal just a little bit, you've done a great job of explaining it. I'll just add that to, the equipment needs for the geothermal and the LED would be a total of 564,000 dollars. So, if we are providing that information to the county and asking them to consider that option, that's the number that's attached to it. There's a couple of different ROI's attached to it, depends on who you're talking to, whether you're taking the high end or the low end, but we generally go somewhere in between. But since we're not the ones that are financing it or trying to determine, find the money or making the decision, I don't, I don't know that we have to evaluate the return on the investment there. So, I will, we will entertain Ms. Carpenter's questions or concerns about geothermal, because we promised her we would.
All right, Ms. Carpenter?
Well, I have quite a few questions. Number one, this was never brought up to our board. Now, I have reviewed the tapes where this budget amendment was put to us, I have gone back and reviewed when this budget amendment was brought to our board on the 2nd of June, when this budget amendment was brought to us. It was never, ever brought to this whole board to say 90,000 dollars was what it was going to cost to engineer for geothermal. Uh-uh. Nothing was said to this board that it was going to cost 90,000 dollars to do the engineering for geothermal. No.
I think we probably are aware that there's a disconnect amongst the communication between what goes on between the subcommittees and the full board, and certainly right now, when there's a new board and a new chair, it's probably a perfect time to resolve that issue going forward, that can be taken care of, just, we can resolve that right now.
Well, there was, because only two board members were made aware of this, and this board was not. And so, that was, because I can tell you right now, because nobody was aware on this board that that's what that was for. So, that was number one. And then, two, I mean, I don't know anything about what's the life expectancy of geothermal, what is the life expectancy of a regular heating unit, you know, those type of things is, I need that type of information to... You know, those type of things is, I need that type of information to know, all right, what's the life expectancy of a regular unit?
Obviously, it depends on the unit. If you're looking at like a DX unit...
What would we put in a regular, the regular schools? What would we normally put into a school?
Well, it's still a variety, and sorry, you know, not to have one answer, but there are many different solutions for HVAC, you know, issues, and in this particular case, schools. So you could look at a, like a DX unit, which is a direct exchange, electric, air-to-air unit. You might expect that unit to have a 10- to 15-year life. And I'm sure that there are some units that might have a little bit more on that. There's probably a couple that might be a little bit below that. The boilers, you might have a cast iron boiler that has been in operation since the '60s, and that's terrific. However, the efficiency of that unit is gonna be rather poor compared to today's standards. So it may be operating, but it's operating at a level where you really would need to consider replacing it. Plus, the, you know, the life, it is near the end of its life, and the maintenance costs are getting high. So again, you know, at that point, you really would wanna make that decision to be replacing it. There's other types, there's rooftop units. Rooftop units are exposed to the elements, so their life, you know, can be, you know, in the 10- to 15-year timeframe. Chillers, you've got centrifugal chillers that might be indoors. They have a pretty good life. You have air-cooled chillers that will be outside, and their life might be in the 15- to 20-year timeframe. When you compare it to geothermal, geothermal, and you're looking at specifically the well field of the geothermal, that the type of piping that's used is supposed to be in the 50-year, you know, life. And that's good. The building is supposed to have a 50-year life, so we're pretty close to the life of the building. Certainly, we look at buildings, and unfortunately, we have to have our buildings last, you know, more than 50 years. But again, as the Fanning-Howey study noted, you know, the costs, you know, start to increase, and you really need to be looking at replacement, you know, on some of those major items. So hopefully, that gives you a range of what that is. So the geothermal well field would be acting as the heat exchanger, and you should, we hope to have a 50-year life on that.
Well, what's the replacement? It said 565. Does it cost a million dollars to replace that? And where am I gonna get that million dollars to replace that when I have to replace it?
Okay, so it was $524,000 was the geothermal component of that. $40,500 was the LED component of that. When you look at a, some of the calculations, and what, we didn't take it out 50 years, we did take it out 30 years. And what you see would be the net present value of the system would be in the, depending on financing, depending on several variables, you might see the net present value in the $170,000 range, you know, on the system. And that was just one particular example using several different variables. So hopefully, that answers your question on that.
Also, now that, are we still with that energy company? And my other question is, if we're still with that energy company, are they gonna take their cut of what we save? Because...
We never spent it. They can't. We never spent the dollars, so they can't take a portion of the savings.
Yeah, I mean, he just said we're gonna save all this money.
But they take a portion of the savings, so we have to have spent it before they can calculate a savings. So if we go in with an energy-efficient machine, or whatever that thing is, motor system, then we won't ever spend the additional money, and they can't calculate a savings off of it. So there will be savings, but it won't be anything that they'll have calculated a rate off of. So we'll generate savings, but they won't get a, they won't get a, they won't get a fee off of it.
Well, I thought we were saving money.
We are saving money.
Well, how...
But we're never gonna pay it. We're not gonna pay their fee associated with it. We're never gonna spend it. So if our power bill is normally $10,000, or would be on a regular system, and now it's gonna be $5,000 because we're putting in this more efficient system, then it's gonna be $5,000 from here on out. So there's, we would have never spent that additional $5,000, so we're not gonna calculate a fee on that.
So they're not gonna say, well, we saved you $10,000 to...
No, no.
To do this?
They can't, no.
But we're not gonna run into this problem anymore when, so I'm gonna have to say, please give me an invoice when we get something like this where it says overages, and we're not gonna run into this?
No, we're gonna work with the board chair and make sure that the board is communicated with the way that the board wishes to be communicated with.
Because this was very distressing to me, because like I say, we had no, and this other, the 107, because really, we need to make sure what we're getting when we see something like that, because like I say, there was nothing at all mentioned on this, and that was very disturbing to me.
We'll work with the board chair if you want minutes, or if you want, how you wanna communicate that, but we'll work that, we'll work through that.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Harrison?
May I please, and I'll try to be brief. So we're building a building. We're hoping to get funding for a geothermal package to the tune of about $564,000, including the lighting.
LED.
Okay. But in the meantime, we're budgeting surely for a regular unit. I mean, the building's got to have heating. So in this budget proposal as it is, where is the regular, the simple word is the regular, normal unit?
In the construction contract.
In the construction line of 13440. Okay, so...
Well, it's, yeah, just keep going. That was the original budget, but just keep going.
Along that road, okay.
Yeah.
So we're budgeting for the regular unit, but if we put in ultimately a geothermal unit, how will we, I think you see where I'm going, how will we balance out with the county, the fact that we didn't put in a regular unit?
Okay, as far as what's in the base bid, we have a, as far as inside the building, not much changes in there, because part of the design was taking into account the possibility of geothermal. So it's water source heat pumps inside the school, and that works with whether it's geothermal or whether it's not. So the building, for the most part, won't change. The $524,000 is the cost of the well field and the piping to and from. There are some modifications in the mechanical room, because the mechanical room doesn't need to be configured the same way, but, and that's actually some savings there. So if you don't want to pursue the option of the geothermal, there's still an HVAC system in this building.
But we're not gonna have both, are we?
No.
And we're obviously gonna have at least the HVAC, but we're not gonna have both. We're not gonna retrofit for both types of heating.
Are you asking if the 500 is the difference between the two?
I guess what I'm trying to lead to is, are we going to have extra costs with change orders if we go the geothermal route?
You know, the geothermal...
With the current design, I think is what I mean.
Right. The geothermal was a bid alternate. And again, that price is $524,000. Primarily, that is the well field. So if there's no interest in pursuing geothermal, then that, then this can end, and that the school will be able to function just fine, because it's designed so that if the geothermal didn't happen, everything's going to work. So there isn't any risk, if that's what you're worried about.
Okay, maybe that is where I'm leading. I plainly gotta think it out some more, but, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and actually, there's a 60-day window that we have to exercise this option. So from the day we turn the contract over, which I believe has been recently, the clock starts ticking on that option, because once they start doing the site work and that type of activity, then at the end of 60 days, basically, we'll have to remove that option from the table. Is that correct?
There were two limitations. Certainly, the 60 days was from when grading started, and we needed to make sure that we didn't pass the point of no return to where it then started to cost money, where if we're gonna do the geothermal well field, we need to, the greater, you know, we'd need to know that and not do anything that's gonna be counterproductive to that. And 60 days was the time that was identified for that. As far as pricing and holding the pricing, the contractor has, as per contract, we said, contractor, you need to hold your pricing for 80 days from the time that this was bid. So that 80 days does come up in December. It's actually December 21st. The day I had notified you all was December 19th, which is a Friday. December 21st is a Sunday. So that's the day that they will not have to continue to hold their pricing. Of course, if there is interest, we will go talk to the contractor and see if we can't extend that.
All right, board members. I'll need a motion, and I look at this as three components, because we're going to only ask the commissioners for $1,144,372, and then provide them the option for the geothermal and the LED lighting, which is just an option, and it's their choice to make. And then we need to at least state that there are still outstanding issues with the Highway 73 roundabout improvements that we are not sure about at this point. And there's still lots of conversations going on with not only the Department of Transportation, but also with Concord, with Kannapolis, because it's right in the smack of three different jurisdictions, or two different jurisdictions and the county. So, and they are also conversing with some landowners in the area about how they might want to be involved with this, with the Highway 73 improvement. So I would look at it as falling in three ways. One is our direct ask, and then the others are more options and alerts to them that these are the other costs that we see out there, and you, one is a direct cost, which would be the 73, the other two are just pure optional costs. So what is your pleasure? Do I have a motion?
All right. I move that we approve the request as written.
And a kind of friendly amendment to add the addendum, or the...
So, okay.
Additional things we don't know yet.
Right. So I moved that we approve the request as written with additionally providing the commissioners with the optional information on adding geothermal and LED lighting and alerting them to the additional cost of improvements on Highway 73 pending a final decision from North Carolina Department of Transportation.
All right, I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second if that covers everything that the county commissioners need to know at this point. Anything else that we can tell the county commissioners to move this along? I mean, it's a fine resolution, I just want them to be completely alerted to everything we know as of right now.
Do we have estimated costs for the roundabout?
Is there an estimated cost for this roundabout?
There is, however, the engineering hasn't been done. The initial estimates was $1.2 million. Certainly, we'd have to look to see what the impact would be on utility, relocations, things like that. And again, we'll see what the final verdict on the roundabout is, and that's still in the discussion phase.
Okay, but if they didn't do the roundabout, we'd still have to make road improvements of some sort?
That's correct.
And do we have an idea...
And it would not be in the neighborhood of $1.2 million, it would be less.
But it would be all up to us, or it would be all part of our project, or would that be shared too?
Certainly, we'd have to see where the location is, and who it affects, and who it benefits, and what participation we might be able to discuss with the beneficiary.
Any, the net effect is we still have road improvements that they're gonna have to fund at some point.
Yes.
Second the motion.
All right. So Mr. Harrison seconded the motion. Is there any more discussion on this particular motion? All right, all in favor of the motion made by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Harrison on the additional project funds for the Odell grades three through five, say aye? Aye. All oppose? Okay, motion carries, 7-0. All right, board members, let's go to the language immersion expansion splash with Dr. Van Huclem, and I believe we've broken it out into two components, is that correct? Dr. Van Huclem, we've had the Spanish first.
That's correct, yes. So I wanna recognize Darren Roberts in the audience, the request of the board. He's here tonight. He's gonna talk a little bit about the soft side of dual-language immersion. So thank you for staying out here a little bit late tonight. And also, Darren and Dr. Natus, along with Amy Violet, spent quite a bit of time this week trying to capture dual-language immersion at Fur Elementary School with some kids and teacher interviews. So all I'm gonna do tonight is show you a video that'll allow you to kinda get the feel of the program. Hopefully, it'll break up this evening, tonight, and then Darren will talk to you a little bit, and then we'll entertain any questions you have about the Spanish immersion expansion. We don't have the pretty music in the background, but these are the slides you saw last week regarding the math data. And then we did try to tease out some more objective reading data. I know that was a concern of the board, so we did drill down into some of those things. You'll see those graphs coming up next.
What is Splash at Fur Elementary?
It's a Spanish immersion program.
It's a Spanish immersion program.
And do you enjoy being in the Splash program?
Yes.
Why?
Because I'm learning Spanish, because I haven't learned it very much.
So, how would you describe learning two languages?
I would describe it fun and very complicating sometimes.
Well, why is it fun?
Because you get to do all kinds of different projects. Like math projects.
And do you do those projects only in English and only in Spanish, or do you do both?
We do both things, not all the time, but sometimes we do the same program in Spanish and English. But in Spanish, the paper's in Spanish, and in English, it's in English.
If you could describe in one word, what would you say? Why do you think it's so fun?
Because I like speaking different, I like to communicate different languages and tell my friends and family what it means.
Really? So, you get to share what you're learning at school with people at home and maybe in the neighborhood that you play with? And what do they think about that?
Maybe at school.
Why is it important for you to know two languages?
It's important for you to know two languages, because if another person speaks a different languages, and you know that language because you learned it at school, you can speak that kind of language to them.
What do your students enjoy the most about learning two languages?
I feel what they enjoy the most is when they come, for example, to my class, and they learn something in Spanish, and they say, "Oh, we are learning that in English too." And they can make that connection. They feel, wow, we're learning so much, because we were able to understand it in English, and now we are able to understand it and do it also in Spanish. So, I feel that's what they enjoy the most, seeing that connection.
How will the Splash program prepare students for a global economy?
Students are now, are learning now that Spanish is very important, and that they can find it here in their own country. They don't have to travel, like, to different places. Here, if they go to a store, they understand that sometimes they are going to find people that speak Spanish to them, and they are able to understand and communicate to that person, with that person. And I feel like we are not only teaching the language, it's also the culture, so we are expanding their minds and teaching them about things that are going on around the world, not just here.
Hoy es lunes. ¿Qué día será mañana? Hoy es lunes. ¿Qué día será mañana? Hoy es lunes. ¿Qué día será mañana? ¿Qué día será mañana? ¿Martes? ¿Mañana?
Does it? Yes, it does. Good. And what's that? What's that?
A bunny.
A bunny, but we're gonna call it a rabbit. Rabbit is the bigger bunny. Bunny is the little, like the baby, okay? Rabbit, does rabbit start with r? Rabbit, does it start with r? Jorge's listening. Does it, Jorge? Yeah! It does. Rabbit starts with r.
Hola, soy Camila. Soy feliz porque es, um, good.
What did you just say in Spanish?
Um, I said, um, I, my name, and I love Fur because it is fun, you get to do different things, and I just love the Splash program.
Mirad mi video.
And what does that mean in English?
Thank you for watching my video.
So, that gives you a little sense of our students, and we did want Darren to come and speak to the soft side, in particular, the connection to the parents because of the Splash program, and the students, our Hispanic ESL students, and how they feel about the program.
Good evening. First off, let me say thank you for the honor of being principal at Fur. It's far and away the best elementary school in Cabarrus County. I hope my other principal peers heard that. It really is a privilege to work with such a great staff and a wonderful group of students and parents. It's a terrific place. And I also wanna thank you for the opportunity to start the Splash program. As Dr. Van Heukleem mentioned, and as you saw in the video, we've got some great data on the academic achievements of our kids in the program. And that's, of course, the biggest reason why we started Splash two years ago. We wanted the kids to excel in reading and math, and we're seeing some good results early on. But we were also interested in some of the soft data, as Dr. Van Heukleem referred to it as. Some of the data that we looked at showed that students in a program like this enjoy school more, they get in trouble less often, they come to school at a better rate, their attendance rate is much better, and that the families are more involved. And while we're early on in the program, and maybe we can't really point to that data and say hard and fast, we've got that hard and fast data, we've got the initial beginnings to the hard and fast data that'll show that we're getting the same results. We surveyed the parents this past week, and we got responses back from 70 of our parents in two days, which was a really good response. Of those responses that we received, we asked the parents, would you recommend Splash to other parents? And 94% said yes. The ones who didn't answer yes said, "It's early, we wanna wait until later on in the year to decide." But no one said no at this point, so we're really thrilled with that. We also asked them if they felt like their child had benefited from being in the program, and 93% said yes. Again, the others said, "It's still early on, and we haven't made our full decision yet," but no one said no. And then, we asked them if they were more involved in school, because their child is a part of the Splash program, and 75% of the parents said yes. Again, those that did not say yes, they said, "Well, we would be involved regardless of what kind of program our child was involved in." So, again, we feel like those are all positive responses. And that's regardless of whether those are native Spanish-speaking parents or native English-speaking parents. When I teased out some of the specific responses that parents gave to us, they said that this caused them to read with their child more often, whether they're native English speakers or native Spanish speakers. They're reading in their native language. They appreciated the fact, native Spanish speakers did, they appreciated the fact that their child is learning Spanish and is actually helping the entire family continue that heritage at home. The parents said that they have enjoyed learning the correct way to pronounce some of the Spanish words, which I thought that was an interesting response. We heard that from several. We also found that it's actually caused some of the family to go out and learn the Spanish language on their own, either buying programs to learn it, downloading apps, or actually learning from their child, which I thought was an interesting response. And in regards to attendance and behavior data, we heard the parents and the kids tell us how much fun learning can be in such a program like this. They do feel challenged. I heard from a number of parents that their kids are not bored, and they appreciate that, that this is really pushing them. And I also heard from a few of them that it's increased their self-esteem, they're more confident now. So, that's some of the soft data that we're getting back. When I walk into the classrooms, I see exactly what we would hope to see. If I were gonna put my child in a class, I see the kind of things that I would want my child to be experiencing. Kids are engaged in the activities, they're smiling, they're having a good time, and you get a sense of family and community. And it's a bigger community than you would normally be a part of, because, again, you've got two teachers sharing that student. So, instead of that student coming to school and only having that one teacher who loves them and cares for them and wants to do what's best for them, they've now got two adults who see them every other day and have that same love and care for that child. And so, they can get together and they can brainstorm ideas to help that kid be successful. And again, it's a really good family, close bond that they're developing. And again, we just appreciate the opportunity to have the Splash program at Fur Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
So, if you guys have any questions for Darren, he's here, obviously. You're gonna vote two separate times, one for the expansion of the Splash program, and then we'll talk about Mandarin a little bit. But if you have any questions for Darren, he's here, or myself.
All right, board members, are there any questions? I'll start with Mr. Powell's side of the table.
Yes, sir. Do we have numbers for next year? Estimated numbers for next year?
We just had the Magnet Fair this past week, and we had a very good response. We had 30 parents come over and inquire about Splash immersion, which was more than we had at the Magnet Fair last year. In fact, it's about double what we had last year. So, I'm encouraged by that. We will have our first open house for parents on January 15th, and that'll give me a better idea of how many parents are interested from outside of the Fur attendance zone. But again, based on what we saw from the Magnet Fair last week, I would anticipate that we're gonna have at least as much interest this year, if not more. Last school year, we had 36 parents attend our open house and at least fill out an application. Some of them also applied to the STEM program or to the IB program, and when their child was selected there, they chose to enroll their child at those other programs. So, we didn't get all of those 36 students to come to us. And then, some of those that did get accepted, in the end, decided they could not make it work out because of transportation issues. Because, again, the parents have to provide transportation to Fur, and if you live more than about five or six miles away, it was just too difficult for them to come over. So, I would anticipate we're probably gonna add, again, around 20 to 25 students from outside of the Fur attendance zone. And each of the last two years, we've had between 60 and 70 of the students who live within the Fur attendance zone who were interested in Splash. So, we should be looking at about 85 to 90 students in Splash next school year in kindergarten.
And I would add, just remember back to the projections I gave you last year when we expanded Fur, 25 to 30 is kind of in that sweet spot. As we matriculate those kids up, we've got space at Fur, we wanna max out the Fur building, but you don't wanna have too many. So, really, they can only accept about 25 to 30 to really kinda keep within those projections and still not get to places where you have trailers and things on campus.
Do you have a wait list for current classes, since I guess you can enter in first grade?
We allow students to enter up until the end of kindergarten or the very first day of first grade. After that, unless you're a native Spanish-speaking student, it's not recommended that you join the program any point after that, because you would not have had exposure to the Spanish language, and your child would simply be too far behind to catch up at that point. So, there is not a waiting list for our current first-grade Splash group. They're maxed out at 48, they've been at 48 since the first day of first grade, we haven't lost anybody, and we certainly hope that we don't lose anyone. The only way we would move someone in again is if they came to us and they were a native Spanish-speaking student. We would consider putting them in, because they'd have that Spanish background. Within kindergarten, we do not have a waiting list currently, because we were able to place all the Fur students within the program, those that asked to be in, they were placed in. Then we had room for all those outside of the Fur attendance zone that could make those travel arrangements to get to us on time. And then, we have currently eight empty spots, and we actually have some people that are interested in moving into those right after Christmas when they move to our area. So, we may fill those up right after Christmas break, but currently, we do have eight spots without a waiting list. And again, that's because we were allowed to expand from one pairing, two classes of 48, to four total classes that could accommodate up to 96 students.
Okay, Ms. Carpenter, do you have any comments?
No, not this one.
Okay, Ms. Dr. Phillips? Mr. Walter?
I had the opportunity last year to come out and see firsthand, and I was very impressed in the results. I mean, I think that's, we're doing an excellent job there. Thank you for all the work that you're putting with the children.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison?
Also came out last year, again, very impressed with the total program. Here's a quiz for you. How many types of Spanish are there?
That I do not know.
It's about 22. There are about at least 20 variants or variations of Spanish. So, which are y'all teaching? Is it Castilian? Is it Central American? I mean, are you teaching a particular dialect of Spanish? Do you know the, or are you just teaching generic Spanish? Or is it a particular dialect?
Sure. The dialect is Castilian.
You could tell me.
The accent changes based on the teacher, so that is something.
So, you're teaching formal Spanish?
Yes, we're teaching formal Spanish. Currently, out of the three teachers, we have one Chilean teacher, and we have two Colombian teachers. And so, they have a little bit different accent, but the kids, you know, the kids adopt the accent of their teacher.
Gotcha, gotcha. How should I put this? What is the demographic mix of the current population? Is it 50% English and 50% Spanish?
Roughly, it's 50%. That's what our goal was when we started out in the first year. We actually had 23 students that, when their parent filled out the enrollment packet, they checked off that Spanish was spoken at home. So, those students were placed in to be the ESL component of the program, and then we had 25 students that were native English speakers. With the current group, it's a little bit heavier on the ESL side. We're looking at about 25 within each pair. But again, basically 50-50, and that's our goal.
And can you give me a sense of how well one child learns from another? How is the instruction augmented by one child teaching another child cross-linguistic learning?
Yeah, those classrooms are very open. There's a lot more communication between the children in those classrooms than you would see in the traditional classrooms. The kids are working together in small groups or in pairs, and they're conversing all the time. And having those native Spanish speakers in the classroom with the native English speakers supports them when they're trying to learn Spanish, and of course, vice versa, when you go to the other classroom. And then, you also hear the kids use the language with each other out on the playground and in the cafeteria and other places in the building. So, having that mix is really important.
Do you notice any kind of social bonding, for lack of a better way of putting it? I mean, kids interact the way they interact when they are on the same page with each other in their vocal and linguistic skills. Do you notice anything different about how an English-speaking child and a Spanish-speaking child interact with each other in their social behaviors toward each other?
Absolutely. Certainly helps them to form friendships. And again, within the classroom, when you're in the Spanish-speaking classroom, those native Spanish speakers can be the leaders in the classroom, builds their self-esteem, they have more confidence than when you go in the English classroom to participate and to be involved with the other children who are native English speakers and communicate with them. And so, again, I think they're building relationships that you would not otherwise have, or at least not at the same accelerated rate.
Okay, great work. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Fur? All right. If we pass this, then we will be opening this up at Rocky River, is what I read in a recent email. Is that what your intent is?
So, we have talked to the principal at Rocky River about that potential. It meets all of our kind of soft criteria of a Title I school with a high ESL population. They have space, you know, it's built for 1,000, they have about 750 kids. So, again, it would meet a need in another geographic area of our county for that school choice. So, families maybe in Harrisburg or anywhere within driving distance of Rocky River could choose to go to Rocky River as an open enrollment student. You know, we haven't done the work with the teachers yet, so I hesitate to say we're gonna definitely put it there. Of course, last month, you heard from one of their lead teachers, if you remember, she was a open mic speaker. I can't remember her name, but I didn't even know she was coming to talk to the board, but she, it was part of her doctoral work, and she is a lead teacher at Rocky River advocating for the immersion program at Rocky River. So, that was, what do you call that, ironic or coincidental, one or the other? Do you remember her name?
Staged? Is that the right word?
Yeah.
Serendipitous, maybe.
Yeah. So, anyways, we would wanna do that work with the community, make sure that they're on board with that and they're prepared to embark on that, but that is our thinking at this time, yeah. And kinda, you know, going back to the vision that we presented last week, you know, Cabarrus County is in the shape of a triangle. The idea would be to try to have three schools in the shape of a smaller triangle that can meet all the geographic areas of our district. It would, you know, accelerate the learning for our Hispanic ESL kids who are really, really behind, we know this, and then give more choice options for our families in different geographic areas without transportation. But we're seeing from the Fur model, we don't have to offer transportation, we have enough families that are willing to drive their kids for this program and fill up some of these schools that have space. And that meets another need with our commissioners, to show the efficiency of our building usage.
Yes, ma'am.
I did put my two cents worth in, and I will. One thing that I mentioned last week, and again, we're just starting with our data, and that was one of the concerns I had. And I really would like to see us have at least one more year of data under our belt, and as you mentioned, you still, you do have some spaces that you don't have filled. Think you will have them filled by Christmas. But again, I would feel more comfortable having at least another year of data. We jumped before we had data to start with and jumped on with the program, and that's one of the concerns I have. Again, as I mentioned last week, I would like to, you know, we're looking at, if we expanded it, we're looking at at least $150,000 total, 'cause didn't you say $50,000 per site if we do three sites?
Correct. Correct, yeah. If you were to open one program, they're $50,000 per site.
Per site? And we said three sites?
Over the course of three years. But remember, there are also that conversion chart. So, remember, over time, in the conversion of teachers, they slowly start to pay themselves back.
Well, yeah, that's quite a ways out.
No, you're right. And the other thing I wanna say with the data, while, yes, we only have two years of data, the data is directly in line with all the national data, the data is directly in line with all the national and international data that we base the program on. And the students, in particular, our Hispanic ESL students, those four-year-olds that are sitting in our county right now, they only have one chance to get into that program. So, you know, we don't want to wait for them to miss out on something that we believe and have data to suggest really works for those kids.
But we do have other things that work, too. And I know we will agree to disagree because I know that our teacher assistants have worked very hard and they're one-on-one, too. So that money could go for that, and so we can agree to disagree. But that money, and like I say, I'd like to see our teacher assistants put back in classrooms, too. So that's my two cents worth.
All right, board members, we have before us, this motion is to put this, put the splash program into our budget. So we're not actually approving the program unless we get our appropriate funding to support the program. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. You're approving the concept of opening a second dual-language immersion program. That would trigger us to take that through our budgetary process, and if it was allocated, then we would move forward with that.
And so this motion would be for one more program at this point and not for three programs. Okay. All right, board members, I need a motion for this particular item. Do I have anybody who would like to offer up one?
And can I ask, are we looking at the proposal on, what's that page?
Nine point nine is the line item.
And the Spanish Dual Immersion Program chart, which is on, can't quite tell what page, page one of four?
Because that says three elementaries.
What budgetary data are we looking at? This one? So we're voting here whether or not to spend seventy-three thousand five hundred this year and the rest of that chart for the next subsequent years. And so we're making a commitment here for this number of years.
You're making a commitment to take this chart to the...
Long-term budgetary.
Exactly, yeah.
Sustaining program for apparently this six years?
Right.
Is that making sense?
But yeah, I was looking in the descriptor of our agenda, and it just says at a cost of fifty thousand per school, but this is much more precise, it seems like, than what the... But are we approving three programs?
What I understand...
Spanish programs? Or are we approving one additional kindergarten program?
That is your decision. The vision, like I said, the vision would be to have a small triangle, three schools ultimately within three years, fur and two others. That would be a smaller triangle of Cabarrus County that would provide choice. Whether you choose to approve both of those, and we would implement those over three years and not have to come back to the board, is your choice. If you want to do it one at a time, that is your choice as well. I mean, we're trying to give you kind of the long-range plan, and then you can subsequently decide how you want to approve that or disapprove it.
Do I have a motion from our board to do something with this, with the Spanish immersion program?
I would very proudly recommend that the board accept the plan to open up apparently a second Spanish dual-immersion program at a site as yet undetermined, beginning twenty fifteen, sixteen, according to this, at least half of this presentation here.
All right. Do I have a second to that particular motion?
I'll second that.
All right. Well, board members, I have a motion that will open up one site, kindergarten's site in two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Is that correct? And we would bake this into the budget for next year. Any more discussion on this?
Is there a reason it wouldn't be at Rocky River?
Just, other than I just haven't vetted all the, I mean, it's very likely it'll be at Rocky River. I mean, I want to, we like to talk to teachers. We want to, you know, get those community members on board with that. You know, we already have one teacher that's a leader on that staff that's, you know, indicated that they're supportive, had a really good talk with the principal there. So I can't imagine it wouldn't be Rocky River, but I don't want to say that definitively at this point.
All right, board members, is there any other discussion? We have a motion before us. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All oppose?
Ad-hoc.
Three. So it's four to three, Aileen. Motion passes.
So it's Mr. Fur.
Mr. Fur, Ms. Carpenter, and Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Yes. All right, we're going to nine ten, nine point ten, approval of language immersion expansion. This is the Mandarin. Dr. Van Heukellem, the floor is yours.
So you've seen kind of our rationale behind this. Obviously, this does not attack an achievement gap as the dual-language immersion does. This is just providing more choices for our community, and it does come at a cost. But as you heard last week, you know, we have a community that wants choice. We had a lot of parents at the Magnet Fair, and they want different choices. They want to go shopping for schools, and this is a way for us to meet a need. And the board can entertain discussion and ask questions at this time.
All right, board members, I'll start with Mr. Fur on his end. Do you have any comments? Mr. Harrison?
Why not Hindi?
So...
Why not some other language? Why Mandarin? But I'm talking, not educationally speaking, but in terms of the population, the child population at nearby a school.
Sure.
Why not something like the native central language of India, attracting that kind of dual-immersion, English and...
Right.
And a, another option other than Mandarin.
Yeah. So immersion works regardless of language. We could teach him whatever language, that brain cognition, all that other stuff. And dual-language would work regardless of language, too. Two primary reasons for Mandarin. One is the pipeline of teachers that we would have from VIF, the support, the just efficiency and the reality of trying to recruit the number of teachers we would need to sustain that program. We have a pipeline. They don't offer any other, you know, VIF only offers Spanish and Mandarin, so taking that on would be a burden. Secondly, I think it's market-driven. When you look at the languages that our workforce needs, Mandarin rises to the top as the language of business. In addition, it has a strong component or a recruitment component for our armed services. So when we talk to our Army, our armed service recruiters, they want kids that can speak Mandarin, Russian, and Arabic. Those are the kids, those are called the critical languages. We receive grant funding for the, some of our Chinese programs that we've had in the past from the State Department, funneled through different sources because they want to promote this idea that we need kids, we need young adults eventually who can speak those critical languages for, you know, national security, obviously, is their motive there. So those would be my two primary reasons why Mandarin.
But a kindergartner is not going to be in the military or be a translator or any of that stuff. That's twelve and fifteen years way down the line that the child will have studied a language in order to be proficient enough to fill any of those...
Correct.
Needs at some level. If this said Spanish, even though we just got through voting for a Spanish program, if this said Spanish, I'd vote for it. And boom, there would be your third Spanish program. Now, I'm not sure what we can do going forward, but as far as I'm concerned, if this were just another Spanish program, I would certainly support it. But I've beat the horse a few times about my misgivings about teaching Mandarin because I don't, I just can't get my brain around the long-term viability and the likelihood of children actually using in a daily way Mandarin as opposed to, to me, the much more realistic or practical use of Spanish that at a very early age throughout their life, they would use and retain and reinforce, reinforce with daily use. I'll stop there, though, on that point.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter?
So we think we have enough demand for this program that'll always be sustainable through the elementary school level?
Certainly, we would do some more market research, but our initial data indicates that in that Cox Mill area in particular, you know, that there is the demand to support a full classroom there that would travel through, all the way through fifth grade. But, you know, as I said before, Mandarin, to Mr. Harrison's point, we've got to have full classroom there because attrition happens and you want to make sure you can support it long-term. So we wouldn't open it without, you know, having confidence that it's, the demand is there.
And we're already teaching Mandarin as an elective, is that...
Correct, yeah.
Encore class?
Yes.
Correct.
Like once every seven days, kids get Mandarin at Cox Mill Elementary, something like that.
And I think as Dr. Shepherd said last week, the competition's out there right around the corner. Charter School, their charter school.
Yeah, Carolina International is right there, yeah.
As far as choice for parents, and if that's the demand for it, I'm supportive of it. I'm not exactly sure of the cost and how that works out and exactly when to implement it, but I'm certainly in favor of further investigating it.
All right. Dr. Phillips?
All right. Well, so is your plan that this would also be an open enrollment program similar to what we're offering for the Spanish, English dual-language?
Originally, it was not. Obviously, if we put at Cox Mill Elementary School, we already have a full school there. You know, if there was space, then absolutely we would consider it open enrollment. There's nothing holding us back other than the fact that Cox Mill has historically been busting at the seams already. It seems counterintuitive to bring more kids in, but, you know, we need a full classroom as well. So, you know, that would be something we would have to explore.
Yeah, I think to ensure that we do get the sufficient numbers to have a full classroom, I think it would be good to have it as open enrollment. And again, as I said last week, we might consider the new Odell schools as an option that would have more space at least initially. But yeah, I'm certainly in favor of it for the same reason that Mr. Walter voiced and Dr. Shepherd before. It's kind of a competition and responding to competition and offering something I think would be extremely unique and a point of pride for our school district.
Ms. Carpenter?
I'm kind of like Dr. Phil, and I won't call him Dr. Phil. Nah, I'm...
Dr. Jay.
No, Dr. Jay. No, that it should be someplace that we could make it open because Cox Mill, we definitely can't because there's no room there, and that's why we're building Odell to relieve Cox Mill. And that's my only problem with it. And it would be something unique, and that's where I got a problem with that because we couldn't make it, you know, offer it because it is full. But, you know, with my visit to China, I know how important that is. And it is definitely a growing, a growing language and something that can be utilized in business. So I can see the importance of it. And so there I could, I would like to see where we could do the open enrollment with it.
Well, we could certainly, I mean, the motion obviously doesn't have a school tied to it. I've given you the data of the community that, you know, has kind of raised their hands, said, "We'd love to have something like this." We could certainly explore, you know, where to put it and ensure that we have an open enrollment, enough space in that to make sure it's open enrollment, another choice option for families outside their attendance zone. You know, obviously, the market says it's kind of on the border of Charlotte. Those are the families in those suburb, you know, those subdivisions on the border of Charlotte that are going to want this type of program probably. So we'd want to, you know, put it in their location to some extent, drivable at least. But yeah, that's a great, great option. I'd be happy to pursue that if you approve the program.
Close enough, too, I think.
All right. Mr. Powell, you have some comments?
I do. One question first. Do we have Mandarin in high school? Are we offering that at Cox Mill High?
Yes, we are.
Okay. I know it's only my second meeting, and I hear a lot about setting the marketplace and so forth, but I just came from the school environment, and guys, we are the marketplace. We set the marketplace. I feel very comfortable with the quality and the excellence that our public schools are producing every single day. It is remarkable what's going on in these schools, and there is, we're second to none. We are the marketplace. I feel very comfortable letting them catch us. And if we're offering some Mandarin Chinese as a high school class, that we're going to prepare somebody to take an elective course in college, or we're going to prepare them to maybe even do an extensive foreign language resume, I've heard it from a number of people that, yeah, my child took this foreign language or that foreign language, and they just took it and ran with it when they got in college. That's fantastic. That's what we're here for, to prepare people to go live in China. I don't think is appropriate, but if we're providing the enrichment opportunities like we're doing at Harris Road, like we're doing at Hickory Ridge, that's fantastic. Let's keep doing that, offering it as an option, a little bit of exposure, a little bit of language, a lot of culture, moving on. That's just my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. And my comment is, number one, just this past week, there was a news report out that stated that China now is the number-one economy in the world. And I don't think that came as any surprise. We knew it was coming, but I don't know if the U.S. is ever going to be able to overtake those billion-and-a-half people. And so the kind of things that we have to be careful of, my sister's husband works for a Chinese company in this country, and he has to talk to the Chinese managers and upper-level people. Now, they can speak English, but it would be probably even better for him if he could speak Chinese and be able to integrate better with that company. Chinese will be the language of business along with English. So there'll be two languages of business in the upcoming future. And so we are trying to prepare our children to work within our community, to work around our community, to be leaders within our community, but also, we're looking at a global economy. And we're trying to bring that global economy to Cabarrus County as every opportunity we can get it. And in twelve to fifteen years, we're not sure what type of Chinese investment we may have in this county, but if we can bring businesses to us to invest in our community to help us out, and part of that was because we were able to prepare students for those companies, then we've done a great service to our community and to the children that were interested in doing it. I do have some reservations about only going to Cox Mill because if you heard in the redistricting, there was a tremendous amount of angst about moving children from Cox Mill to Odell when they were kind of learning some Chinese over there, and there were all these opportunities, and Odell didn't have that. And so we're building, we're dealing with this north-west, actually, it's more of the western side of the county. And we have to keep in mind that not only is it just the Cox Mill area, but all along that strip going all the way up to Dr. Phillips's subdivision over across seventy-three, it's all growing. Summer Walk is coming our way, and those are all neighborhoods where you'll find many types of students. So we have to be very cognizant of what we're doing along that whole corridor, and I think that it'd be myopic for us to just settle on Cox Mill without looking at where are we in the redistricting. I guess case in point is, when we look at August two thousand sixteen or August or January two thousand sixteen, opening this new school but really fully manning this school in August two thousand sixteen, then it would be nice if we could offer something to them that, to the parents over there, to not, make them think that they were getting something less when they came over to Odell. So I challenge you and your group, if this motion passes, to look at this a little bit more open-minded than just limiting it to a Cox Mill because that whole group, when we redistrict, there's going to be a significant number of Cox Mill parents that will probably end up at Odell. And so we've got to keep that in mind, and I don't want... that in mind. And, and I, I don't want the tension just because we offered it here and we didn't offer it there, especially when the Odell Elementary School Network will be a very large elementary school when you compare, compare the, combine them all together. So, all right, that's all I have is comments. Board members, we're looking for a motion to expand the Mandarin program to one school. Not yet named for the 2015-16 school year. Do I have a motion?
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we expand, or we add a language, Mandarin English language immersion program provided, at, at the elementary school level, provided that it is an open enrollment program, and there are sufficient number of students signed up before we begin the program. And I'll let you decide what that means, but basically, don't go for it if we only get 10.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Walter. Board members, is there any more discussion? If not, then we'll take it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose?
Aye.
That's a different group. So you said aye?
I said aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, so we got a different set.
Different set of four.
Three.
So Mr. Powell was a no, Mr. Fur was a no, and Mr. Harrison was a no. I'm sorry that I had to outcry the no's. It's the only one I could keep up with. I can't count past three. All right, board members, let's move forward. Number 9.11, the approval resolution to close North Drive at Mount Pleasant Middle School. Mr. Meehan, Mr. Burnett? Mr. Roberts, thank you again. I'm sorry we kept you out here so late. Thank you again.
Up on the screen is the, is the exhibit for this item. Would have helped last time if I had the exhibit with you, with this item. There was a question about the, the resolution, about being more descriptive on the area that's going to be closed. Surely the exhibit, we thought did a, did a good job on that. We aren't at this, at the place yet in the design to, to do meets and bounds and, and really be able to describe that technically, graphically is, is what we're, really we're after at this point. The resolution is expressing support for closing this portion of North Drive. If you approve this item, it, we will then be taking the signed version of this to NC DOT. They will then be using that as their item that they will go to the town of Mount Pleasant with for, for the request. So we do hope that, that it does get approved so that, that will follow the chain back to the town of Mount Pleasant. They've got, the expectation is Mount Pleasant will do a public hearing, probably in early February, possibly January, and that the county commissioners will do a public hearing same time frame.
Board members, do you have any questions? We'll start with Mr. Powell. Ms. Carpenter?
Okay, and so this is, that doesn't bother the, the football field stays the same, right? The one at 49, everything stays the same on that, right?
The football field is not in the scope of the work currently.
Okay, and that's what I was thinking. We didn't bother that. Okay, that was my only question.
Mr. Dr. Phillips? Mr. Walter?
Other than we don't really show where the North Drive is on, on the exhibit map, but
It's, it's labeled in two places.
Or it comes across as school property. It is, is not shown, but that's, I don't know. I think, I think you all know what the, I think you can describe exactly where it is, but it doesn't seem to show it on the exhibit.
Would you like a dotted line on where it used to be?
Mr. Harrison?
And, and do we have any sense of the will of the Mount Pleasant Town Council yet? Maybe I missed, maybe I did not hear something you said earlier, but what, what is their timeline?
Well, I, I can tell you a couple of things. I did attend December 1st, a town meeting, gave a presentation of this. It was a question and answer session also. I did answer quite a few questions. I don't recall having any questions related to North Drive, the closing of North Drive. So hopefully, that speaks well for, for the, the request to close North Drive. So I don't know if we can draw anything from that. Again, their timeline, I believe that they will be having a meeting, town meeting in January. And I think that they probably will set their, again, this is their, you know, their, their agendas and timeframes. But I think we're hoping that they would have a public hearing at the February meeting, at their February meeting.
Well, some, some people who go back further than I do, obviously, could say how long a new school for Mount Pleasant has been in the making. And I just hope that this is a relatively small hurdle that we can all get over and, and that we can agree on this. But this is one of just a few last little things that will get a new school for Mount Pleasant. So I hope everyone can be in agreement that this is what needs to happen to get the new facility that Mount Pleasant has so deserved for so long, and certainly so much. So I do support the resolution.
Mr. Fur?
Yeah, I'll just say something briefly. Yes, whatever we can do to expedite the building of that school, those people have waited patiently. And, you know, we've talked about Cox Mill area to west of, of the county, that these people are way overdue.
Thank you, Mr. Fur. I, I have one question, Dave, Mr. Burnett. If, you know, we'll, we'll, I think that this board has got their heart for this resolution. However, if the town council does not go along with the North Drive, what will that do to our timeframe? Will we have to redesign the site and, or will we have to seek for another site? Would that be an option or something that we would need to do?
Certainly, the, the timeframe would be tremendously negatively impacted. I think you could count on, on many months delay. And we'd have to answer the questions. I think it would cost more money. So really, in either scenario that you mentioned, cost more money and a significant delay in the project, probably to the tune of six months. We'd have to see, we'd have to rework the, the phasing and see how that impacts the work. But, and, and really, some of the things that would be, that are currently held sacred, you know, would be, certainly would be impacted and that, and whether that kills the deal and where months turns into many, many more months or even possibly a year, you know, I don't know the answer to that.
Would we be able to utilize the building that we're currently proposing, or would we go to another style if we had to relocate to a different site? Or even if we had to do it on this site? Of course, obviously, we'd, we'd have a lot of hurdles if we had to try to muscle it in on this site without the closing of North Drive.
Yeah, if, if we tried to put it on the same site, certainly, we would have to basically site adapt it again. So we were taking components from Winkler and Hickory Ridge Middle School designs and site adapting and making it fit, making the puzzle pieces fit on, on this site. We'd have to do the same thing. But again, areas that have been held sacred in the past would, would certainly be impacted or maybe would no longer exist.
Thank you. All right, board members, we have the resolution before us, and you've, you've heard the impact. If we don't pass it, we've delayed action for many years or at least possibly 12 months. So don't mean to put any pressure on you, but I need a motion for this particular resolution.
I, I make a motion that we approve the resolution, a resolution to close North Drive at Mount Pleasant Middle School.
I second.
Thank you. Mr. Powell seconds. Ms. Carpenter makes the motion. Any more discussion on this? Okay, let's put it for a vote. All in favor of passing this motion to close North Drive or approve the resolution to close North Drive, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It was unanimous. Ms. Monroe? We're moving now to 9:12, and it's not the that time of night. Approval of the BOE BOC agency agreement and the title change for the new Odell Grades 3-5 Elementary School. Mr. Meehan, Mr. Burnett? Again, come to the podium.
Okay, okay. And this particular item, really, I think we talked earlier about the Mount Pleasant Middle School item. Is that Mark?
Yeah, well, I think there's two, this is the agency agreement that we talked about, which where we transferring the property to the county and then acting as their agent for construction. There is one change on this agreement that is at the county's request. If you look at Page 2, Section 4, Construction Conferences, the county had asked for a language that appeared in some of the prior agency agreements that said that we would provide them with notice of conferences with representatives of the architect, contractors, and vendors, and that they'd have a right to attend those. I did want the language saying that that's only with respect to material changes. It's not every weekly status report, but if there's going to be a change in the project, the county has said they'd like to be apprised to that. I think that's consistent with what we've done in the past in trying to cooperate with them. So the county attorney and I have worked out that language. We're both happy with it there in, in Section 4 of the agreement in front of you. I do suggest, and you can do it before or after you approve this one, I do think you should amend the agenda and also approve the same language for the Mount Pleasant Middle School Agency Agreement. That's one that our board already adapted, adopted in November, but the county has asked that this language be the same in both, which makes sense. They're the parallel agreement. So even though that's not on your agenda, I think we should amend to add a parallel change to the Mount Pleasant Agency Agreement.
All right, board members. So first, I'll ask for an agenda addendum to add the, add the Mount Pleasant Middle School, what is this thing called?
The
Agency Agreement to our agenda so that we can have a motion for that. So is there a motion to add an agency agreement for